Evening everyone and welcome to the Cohasset Select Board Meeting of Tuesday evening, October 1st, 2024. This meeting is being held at 91 Sawyer Street in Cohasset, Massachusetts, but it can be viewed on Cohasset 143 local cable or Facebook Live. Interested parties may also join by utilizing the Zoom link at the bottom of the agenda, which can be found on the town website. Please remember that this is a meeting held in public and is not a public meeting. If you have any comments, please utilize the public comment section of the agenda. Virtual comments will only be monitored on the Zoom link. All speakers, please also state your full name and address for the record. So may I have a roll call, please? Mr. Plex?
Chris Plex here.
Mr. Brady?
Paul Brady, present.
Derek Creighton, present.
David Farag here.
Ellen Maher, present. I'd like to invite everyone to join us in the pledge of allegiance. My allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Thank you. So before we get started, we're aware that our last meeting two weeks ago, the audio on the broadcast vehicles was not very good or unintelligible, and Kevin and the IT team and Cohasset Cable have been working diligently. So if anyone has any difficulty hearing the meeting tonight on any of those virtual mediums, you can please send me an email. I don't have my phone at the table, but you can email me at e-ma-h-e-r@cohassetma.gov and we can attend to it, or you can notify one of the other select board members. So at this point, public comment? Yes?
Leonora Jenkins, 198 Jerusalem Road, current Cohasset Water Commissioner in my 14th year. I want to make a comment about the financial recap that is coming up in the meeting. Unfortunately, I cannot stay for it because I have another commitment. And as Water Commissioner, as I mentioned, I'm in my 14th year. I've found for the quite a long time, we have not been receiving the financial data that is mandated by our bylaws and state requirements that our ratepayers are paying for. Keep us informed of expenditures. Our wooden and current office manager has been providing expenditure information from accounts she keeps on her spreadsheets and whatever information she can glean from the town, which is above and beyond her duties. We have gotten a few sort of basic monthly reports that it's a one-page that doesn't really give us what is required. In addition to state, we should be receiving reports on our accounts that are interest-bearing, namely capital stabilization and retained earnings indicating the interest as it is received. But we haven't seen those. We should also have periodically updated current debt schedule, projects still outstanding, including date past a town meeting, total of project amount spent and amount retaining. Also, there is a discrepancy according to my calculations with the indirect costs dating back to FY23. And I have noted to our people in Town Hall, according to state regulations, they are not supposed to be taking out all of the indirect costs on day one of the new fiscal year. It's supposed to be spread out through the fiscal year. One item that I have had a problem with was for FY23. On day one of that fiscal year, July 1, the town informed us that, well, town meeting voted for the budget and they had to take out $90,544 for a town employee that had quit four months prior to the beginning of fiscal year. I cannot figure out why that was necessary, considering there was no liability for the town for that person. Also, I have been requesting reconciliations of cost every year, as has been recommended in an auditor's management letter. We have not received any of those reconciliations. We were told, well, that was done once and you're never supposed to do it again. I initially started this because I noticed we, as ratepayers, most of you sitting at this table are ratepayers, were paying nine months for healthcare premiums for a dead person. I didn't think that was quite right. But now I have worked out some of these, but not all of them yet. A lot of my information that I requested has not been granted. Also, at the last town meeting, you noticed there was that issue we had to scramble about because it was discovered that for four years, our town accountant had not been funding our projects. We had been sending in invoices, presuming that they were being paid, taking money out of our account. And then all of a sudden, two months after the accountant went out for a water ban without telling us, we were just shocked because most of the money was supposed to have come out of retained earnings as had been voted for town meeting. And that's why at that last town meeting, here we were, we were presented with this payment that had a high interest rate and we paid $33,000 in interest for this ban that we really shouldn't have had to take out. But this is what we're dealing with, and I'm hoping that maybe we can come around and get some information that is required so we know how we can fiscally plan the rest of our budget. Because we have to know what we have available for upcoming projects and how we're going to fund them. Thank you very much.
Any other public comments? Next, I have to open a public hearing. Chris, is that correct for the? Sorry?
Yes.
Is there specific language I need to? Oh, right here in front? Okay, so I'd like to open a public hearing for the proposed cable television renewal license between the town of Cohasset and Verizon, New England. And we will hear from attorney William Solomon. Do we need a motion to open the hearing? May I have a motion? May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Thank you. Okay, we are now in a public hearing. Is attorney Solomon on Zoom?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Just a little context before attorney Solomon joins us. So the town did these five.
Hello, good to be here.
Hi. Mr. Senior's just giving us a brief overview.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you.
So, and we did a 10-year renewal with Comcast between them. But Verizon chose not to do 10 years. They chose to do five because they had publicly stated they were going to get out of the landline cable business. But five years later, they have not gotten out of the landline cable business, so they wanted to do an extent, but they are still discussing getting out of the landline cables, which is their right. So the reason we're here tonight is because they chose an abbreviated agreement as opposed to the typical 10-year renewal. If this seems like it's coming too early, it is. And attorney Solomon negotiated the last contract, last two contracts. And this is his specialty area, which is cable renewals.
Great, thank you. Would you like to give us an overview?
Thank you very much. I sent out a summary just before the meeting. If I could put on the screen, that'd be great if I could share, and you may have a copy that you may not, but I'll put it up on the screen if I can share it. Not quite yet. And you may not be able to allow me to share from where you are.
We think you can.
Okay, now we can, yep, great. Excellent. Well, thank you. Good to be here. As the town manager said, I handled the last Verizon license, the last Comcast license. You know, we together did very well for the town of Cohasset. I know you have an excellent community television program, PEG access, public education government, and you know, since we lasted the license, it never has community television been more important through the COVID period and then the post-COVID period, where hybrid meetings and remote meetings, including as you have here today. And at the same time, as the town manager said, Verizon has done shorter-term licenses because it tells Wall Street it would like to move to a more of a streaming type program. But from our perspective, what's important is not the technology, but whether it's cable television, cable service is defined by the Cable Act. So to its credit, Verizon's back renewing. I negotiated with Paul Train. He was with a local firm, small firm that handles Verizon licensing throughout the country. And it does a good advocate for the company, but also fair to the towns because he knows the importance of these matters. So taking you through the license, as Chris said, it's a five-year license, but what's different this time is that there's a three-year unilateral out that Verizon has. Now, there are some limits to that and some benefits also to the town. In exchange for and in consideration of the right to get out in three years, which has been in Verizon licenses since 2000, January of 2021, and has never been exercised by Verizon, and they're now doing license renewals in communities where they had a three-year out and they're renewing for another five years with another right to a three-year out. So it's not clear that'll be exercised, but in exchange for that right, Verizon is paying PEG capital as a set dollar amount, not as a percentage of gross revenues or per subscriber amount or a mix of those two, but it's a set dollar amount. And they're paying that PEG capital for a five-year term within two years. So the town gets five years of capital. It gets it within two years so that if Verizon were to exercise that three-year out, we would have that capital paid a year and one month before Verizon would have the right to exercise it. The second bullet on the summary here is that Verizon cannot exercise that without 270 days written notice, and they can't give that written notice until the 28th month. So in effect, that takes them to 37th month, that as soon as they could get out. And again, that has not happened to date. The, we have continuation of the PEG channels of three standard definition channels and the one high-definition channel. Don Roan, Access Director, you know, has indicated that that the program, Community Television here in Cohasset, has a high-definition channel that's a combination of different channels and not just a simulcast of one. So it combines, let's understand it, the educational and the government channel. And I think that's great. The better cable television programs in the state are the ones that use that additional channel to do a best of. And that serves the town well. You have the right to change that going forward one time, and that's in the license if you wanted to go to a simulcast, but my sense is that only places that change change from a simulcast to a best-of channel. PEG access support continues at 5% of gross revenues of the cable company and its affiliates. That's very important. The definition of gross revenue is the most important definition in the license. We have a very broad definition without many material exclusions, and that's important because going forward with the continuation of internet service and telephone service, which are not included in the gross revenue, and since these services are bundled, it's important that the language of the gross revenue definition not be such that a company could, if it wanted to, and Verizon hasn't gamed the system. So for instance, the definition we have here makes clear that gross revenue is not as as seen on the books of Verizon or on the bills of Verizon, but rather it's under the rules of GAAP, which now have a means of handling when services are bundled, how to figure out what proportion are cable. And it also allows the company to include more money as cable for purposes of gross revenue than would otherwise be required by GAAP. So we have a very strong definition, and that's incredibly important going forward, where there may be an incentive for some companies, not the ones we have here, to try to say, well, the bill that's paid is mostly for the internet and not for cable. That would decimate your revenues that there is protections we have here in Cohasset. The PEG capital grant was the major item of negotiation and in the updated license I provided today, I did get a yes from Verizon's counsel, and he's 99.9% sure that it'll be confirmed by Verizon, or maybe 100% sure, to the number proposed on this end, which is $58,500 in PEG capital. That's in addition to the 5% of gross revenues, which would be significantly more than that. But the $58,500 should be considered in the context of the fact that Verizon has, as of the end of last year, December 31st of '23, has 820 subscribers. So that's a good capital dollar amount. It's one of the in the very high end of what's paid in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. And that's paid, as I said, three payments within two years, each payment of $19,500. And that was the biggest, you know, always the biggest issue to negotiate. We quickly came to a number based on the experience we've had together. PEG interconnection and cable casting. There's one change here from your current license. Currently, the Verizon license requires Verizon to connect the town hall to the studio at the high school. But since that, your town hall is connected to the high school currently through your fiber system. In discussions with the community television and Don, it was determined that that no longer needed to be required of Verizon since the town connects those two buildings. And there are some potential benefits not requiring that going forward based on some FCC determinations made a few years back. So it has some potential benefit to the town. And it was unnecessary because the town connects the buildings through fiber. So as a result, we dropped that requirement. But importantly, still require the most important part of it, that Verizon pick up all programming at the middle high school, middle school, high school, and that would include any programming that's brought to that studio by community television on its own. Cable service to public buildings. My knowledge, Verizon doesn't provide that anywhere in the Commonwealth, only because most communities that have Comcast already get it from Comcast, and most public buildings or schools don't require two sets of cable. But the license does provide that if requested, they would provide it. Again, there's an FCC ruling that would apply to that, which could allow Verizon to deduct the marginal cost of that service from your 5%. I don't anticipate the town will request that service of Verizon. But if the town needed it and wanted it, it could get it with the potential of some reduction in the 5% of gross revenues. Importantly, although I don't think this will happen because Verizon is less focused on cable, but the license again has strong language with respect to the electronic program guide, which you're familiar with, which says, you know, you can set your recording device to record programming or look at scheduling and PEG access video demand, which may be less important on cable TV nowadays. That this license is very good language that says that if Verizon provides that anywhere else in the Commonwealth, other than on a trial basis, it has to come to Cohasset and discuss not only the financial and technical feasibility, but actually doing that. The two, the more important would be the electronic program guide. And but as I said, I don't anticipate this happening, but what this provision does with respect to both of those services, it makes it clear that if Verizon were to do that, that here in Cohasset, we would not be waiting until the next renewal. So if Verizon wanted to say, well, we don't really want to discuss that for another five years since your renewal is not up yet, we would say, no, this provision clearly was based on the agreed-upon understanding that if these services were provided elsewhere, you would come and talk about providing it here. So that's a summary. Where we are is Verizon's reviewing the license. It's based on language that I have worked with attorney Train on. That's very I think favorable to the town in comparison to most any other license. I think protects the town legally from a policy point of view. And I appreciate the help of your team as always. As the last time, it was more work involved because you were transitioning from a different scenario. However, here again, your administration and your Access Corp, very helpful in getting to this. I'm told by attorney Train that he anticipates everything to be completed. So if, for instance, you meet in two weeks, you'll have this in time to review it in your gender or before that and vote on it at your next meeting. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Mr. Plex?
Questions, thank you.
Mr. Brady?
I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Mr. Creighton?
No questions.
Mr. Farag?
No questions.
No questions. So, Chris, we will vote on this at another, at the next meeting, once the final contract is drafted?
Yes, you can either continue the public hearing and make any changes till next time, or you can close it next up for the comments from public until votes taken. Or at a future.
At a future meeting. And this expires 11/30/2024, is that correct? Okay, so why don't we just continue the hearing until October 15?
Do you think, though, for sure this is going to get done? Do you think Verizon will get back to any time?
Yes, I do. The license you have there, I don't, it'd be very, very few changes. So I anticipate they will get back, you know, next week and will be done toward the end next week. Sometimes there's different levels there, but these things have moved along recently quickly, attorney Tran, so yes, you know, very confident, can't guarantee it, but very confident you'll have this in plenty of time to review it and then to vote on it.
Okay, so we'll continue the public hearing on the cable television license renewal with Verizon until October 15, at which time we should have the final document ready for a vote. Everyone okay with that? Thank you very much for your time and for your explanation of the contract renewal.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Have a good night.
Okay, can I have a motion to continue the public hearing until October 15?
Go on, move.
Mr. Brady moved it second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Okay, next up, South Shore Vote Tech Agreement.
Superintendent, Mr. Hickey, Tom Hickey is in the audience.
Mr. Hickey, come on up. Have a seat.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thanks for putting me on your agenda tonight.
For?
I have some slides here. I realize this part of your agenda is regarding the regional agreement. The handout I have for you includes some other slides about a building project. I'll limit my comments tonight to to the regional agreement in the interest of time.
Okay.
Be happy to come back to address the other item.
I think we did receive these correctly, Tracy, but thank you for the color copies.
Thanks very much. So, Madam Chair, first off, thanks again. My name is Tom Hickey. I'm the school superintendent. I'm also joined tonight by your representative to our regional school committee, Mr. George Cooney. The reason that I'm here tonight is that our school committee has put forward an amendment to our regional agreement. We would have had something in front of you back at the spring 2023 town meeting. When you might recall, there was an article where we brought in a ninth town to our district. And that's the town of Marshfield. They started for the first time with a group of ninth-grade students this past fall. So in the body of this presentation, near the tail end of it, there are some slides that talk about what is it that we're trying to change? And we're limiting our focus to how we calculate debt share. Our regional agreement, which was written when the school, the school was chartered in 1960. Cohasset was one of the original six towns. And the language around how you apportion debt share is written as a fixed approach. Debt share is fixed based on student enrollment at the time of borrowing. This amendment is going to change that to making it a four-year adjustable average so that as student enrollment changes over a four-year window with each passing year, there'll be a slight adjustment based on enrollment. Cohasset's enrollment at our school has been low compared to other towns. The current enrollment share, in the last 20 years, the enrollment share has hovered anywhere from a half of a percent to just under 2%. And so right now, it's around 1.5%. So we're bringing this amendment to all nine of our communities, and it will be on warrants at their respective special town meetings between October and December. The motivation for this adjustment has a lot to do with the potential building project, which is something that, like I said, I'd be happy to come back and visit with you all and unpack that in a bit more detail. But that's the essence of the amendment that we would be bringing to you all for your special town meeting in December.
Great, thank you.
Sure.
Do we have any questions, Mr. Farag? I'll start with you.
No, other than thank you for being here and look forward to the future presentation regarding the new South Shore Vote Tech High School. Tech's very important. It's been traditionally, as you said, was one of the original members and founded. And hopefully will be part of its future success. So I'll leave it there. Thank you.
That's great.
Thank you. I think Vote Tech's doing a great job, and what we're seeing is increasingly higher demand for these types of skills. And I think it's very good that Cohasset was one of the original ones to recognize the importance. And I wish you well as you continue on that, and the more, the better, because a lot of kids are finding out that they can go a half a million dollars in debt work at Starbucks, or they can learn to fix a car. That, well done, and I wish you very well, and thank you for.
Thank you. Thanks very much.
I wanted to thank you so much. Fantastic setup. I like him.
Thank you. We've worked hard on that. Look forward to explaining that in more detail at some point.
I go on my calling sentiment about value. Wait, I just want to clarify. The debt share is a four-year rolling average, is that right?
Yes.
And has he only changed the addition of Marshfield, or was there any change?
So there are some adjustments. Marshfield, when we brought Marshfield in with the 2023 amendment, because Marshfield had no enrollment history, we structured their debt share as a simple number of students in the building adjusted annually. That's going to continue in this amendment. We're just extending the time until Marshall has enough enrollment history to do a similar four-year look back.
Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you.
Do you mind if I ask what Marshfield enrollment is now?
You certainly can. Marshfield is now our largest community with the all of the enrollment shares, if I may, are based on eighth-grade population. So every town is allotted a certain number of seats initially, based on the relative size of their eighth-grade population. That said, Marshfield filled 30 of the 32 seats. So Marshfield after one year is about 5% of the district, and I would expect, and this is important, this will be important to explain that, and this was part of the arrangement with the town, that let's agree that as your enrollment grows, we'll adjust the debt share. You'll get to a certain point and we'll do a look back like everybody else. So it was a robust inaugural class.
Sounds like a nice entry.
Indeed.
Great. Thank you very much. So you need a vote from us to approve the amended agreement?
It would ultimately, Chris will explain it. Ultimately, we'll go to your town meeting, and I'll be happy to be there that evening for any questions. But this is an article request for your warrant, as with any other.
I'd like to thank Mr. Cooney as well. I know you've been the representative of South Shore Vote Tech for a very long time, and we thank you for your service and dedication. It's an important vehicle for kids in Cohasset who aren't following, you know, their traditional path. And I echo Mr. Creighton's sentiments that, you know, the job skills that they get are very valuable. So thank you.
I'm gratified by the comments. I would invite you all. I would invite you all officially or pass it along that we have an open house on Saturday, October nineteenth. It's generally an open house for rising, you know, eighth grade families, but this year of all years, the door should be wide open for anyone that just wants to pop in and see, hey, I haven't made it down one twenty-three that far recently. Let's see, let's see what's going on. Because all paths for this project will lead to a, a vote in January of twenty twenty-five. So we want people to be aware, because we're not the home team in any of our nine towns. So I appreciate your comments on this, on, on this very brief topic, but thank you for sharing.
Do you, do you, and appear before the various school committees of the member towns?
That's it, Madam Chair, it's interesting that you say that. Typically, no, but I'll be in front of your school committee tomorrow night.
Oh, okay.
And it's my attempt to raise awareness and, and hopefully be able to answer questions for folks, some of whom may not even know about Cohasset's other public high school. And, but also for the mechanics of a regional agreement amendment and ultimately more conversation deeper into the fall about the school project. So yes, I'll be there tomorrow night.
Thank you.
So wanted to just get him on early because there's a lot of zoning stuff.
Right.
Just you got the presentation, this will go in front of advisory and I'll vote, so you won't do a recommendation yet typically.
Okay.
You could vote to put her on officially. That's something I think you'd do if anything.
And when does advisory meet?
Oh, then set their meetings, I expect they'll be meeting them next Wednesday and the following.
Okay.
So we'll certainly back to the, we're probably in.
Okay, well, I, I think it's important we hear what advisory has to say. So we'll put it on a future agenda for a vote to put on the warrant for special town meeting.
Great, great, great.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thanks.
Good night.
Good night. Okay, next up, license and permits for the Red Lion Inn. I think we have a representative here.
Good evening, everybody, Madam Chair, gentlemen.
Hello.
Hi, my name is Tony, I'm the general manager of the Red Lion Inn.
Welcome.
Thank you so much, thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight. So we have a wedding, New Year's Eve this year, which is on Tuesday. And we are requesting one hour extension of our legal license from ten to eleven. And because it's on Tuesday, our hours operations are until ten. On any other days are until eleven, so we just need one hour extension.
Okay, and it's a wedding event?
It's a wedding event.
In the barn?
In the barn.
So will it also, the extension also be in the main restaurant and the?
No, we don't need for the restaurant, we just need for the barn.
Okay, just for the event?
Correct.
Does anyone have any questions?
So we're generous to.
The agenda's incorrect. The agenda's incorrect.
Just ten to eleven.
Just one hour, correct. Any other questions?
I think it's a, I'm in favor. Thank you for coming by, I know.
Thank you for your support.
Sometimes, but Cohasset sometimes very concerned about that.
Understand.
Appreciate you coming by and.
Absolutely.
Be glad to make the motion to approve.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Grady and Mr. Flex, any comments? No, okay. So Mr. Creighton has made a motion to approve the request from the Red Lion Inn for an extension of the hours on December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four until eleven P M. For an event. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great, you're all set.
Thank you so much for your support, we're proud to be part of the community.
Well, thank you very.
Thank you.
The bride can rest.
Thank you so much.
Nevermind.
Thank you. Okay, next up, we have a zoning bylaw update for Mr. Callahan. Come on up.
Good evening.
You should have a cot in this room.
We could use it right now. Tom Callahan, Chair of Planning Board. Forgive me that I don't, I left my copy of the bylaws on my desk, so. But I think we're here, we're, tonight we're here just to discuss the mitigation bylaw.
PB five.
That's the number, yes, I think it is.
Okay, do, do you want to look at this?
No.
Okay.
I don't know.
Okay, so maybe you could perhaps update the board on the articles that have been dropped since our last Zoom meeting?
Yeah, so you, you, two, two of you were at the forum last night. We are, we are down to seven articles and despite the numbering that we've used so far and how we have to present them at our public hearing, we're going to reorder how they're done from kind of easy to less easy in order of town meeting itself. But the articles we're dealing with, the conversion to Flory ratio in residential districts and with frontage and with an amendment to the residential custom by law are all going to be tabled. We will have to open the public hearing next week on them, but we will be tabling. And that's because at our planning board meeting on the twenty-fifth last Wednesday, there just was less than majority support to go forward with them, the idea that we need study from the outside world. Having outside experts study these has been something I know I've requested over the years from the bylaw committee. So, you know, on behalf of the planning board, I'd like you to make some resources available. I, I understand that there may be money, the money that's been allocated for finishing up this project that isn't being spent on town council, there may be some money in that budget that we could hire somebody. The problem is that I'm not sure that the planning board members who think this way actually know what it is they want to study. We can clarify that. It should be, it, it's really an analysis of what the change in frontage might do. And, you know, the change is basically to go back to what most suburbs have and to go back what we had before nineteen sixty-nine somewhat. And then the Flory ratio, you know, as to what impact that would have, although speaking personally, it's not rocket science, but one of the members today has proposed doing a study, a certain kind of study that she could undertake herself because of her expertise. I'm still talking to about her about whether that's the right kind of study we need, but the bottom line is the planning board's not in a position to support those articles. Would be awkward for me to be getting up there as the chair of the planning board and the promoter, the planning board being the promoter and yet the recommendations would be against them. So, you know, and then there's of course less than enthusiastic majority support on this board as well, so. If it requires more study, fine, if they can be put off to the spring, fine. As I said at the forum last night, they're not critical to the reorganization of the bylaw, we could keep what we have. These are proposed changes that can rise or fall on their own merits and won't affect what we've done to date.
Well, I think as you're, the planning board reads through what kind of study they want, I think it's kind of hard to say, we'll give you some money, but we don't know how much money for, for what end.
And that's always been the issue, I, I don't know, but if you could talk to Cassandra about whether, she, she mentioned there was some, potentially the budget that has been given for the zoning project, what isn't being spent on, on council might have some leftover for some side expertise. I don't know if that's true or not, I'll let you work that out.
Well, I still check it.
And I mean, you know, a lot of work about, you know, riding at F A R and what the average house sizes have been in Cohasset, you know, is done by the previous working group on our own. Two of our members dug through the records in the assessor's office. That's really, I think, where you need to go is to look and see what the trends are in house sizes and A, do you want to address that? And if you do, is F A R the right way? And if it is, what's the right number to put on the F A R? The number that had been proposed was the average of the house sizes in each of the three districts measured against their minimum lot size through at least, with data through at least twenty twenty-one.
Would you anticipate that the results of the study would be needed for town meeting twenty twenty-five?
Yeah.
For, for that, for the spring process? So it's not something urgent that, that you, I, I think you wanted to tackle.
No, and I.
Seven on, on the, the special town meeting warrant.
No, it would, it would be deferred to the spring. The frontage is a simple, you know, analysis of, you know, we have been an outlier in our frontage forever. And in the late sixties, we changed it for whatever reason. I think it was because personally, I think we observed how many cul-de-sacs were being built and subdivisions, which obviously requires more alteration of land to build a full roadway. And we decided on something else where we have long skinny necks that go out to roads and develop backland through that and long driveways. There's two different patterns of development, you know, we're pretty much already built out. There is, you know, there's projections that we could be still further built out, so it's really an analysis of which way you want to go. And I think it could be as simple as looking at a couple of given pieces of land in town. What would it be developed with subdivision? What would it be developed the way we have it now? The added factor though today is that a subdivision is very costly because of the cost of a road. So I've looked at a change in frontage as also being somewhat of a deterrent to growth. And, you know, there's lots of reasons to decide, you know, should Cohasset is, you know, over eight thousand for the first time? Should we go out to the build, build out projections of nine thousand something or even twelve thousand that I've seen? Can we otherwise handle that fiscally? You know, so those are a lot of questions that, those are the philosophical questions behind it, but again, the, I don't consider any of this rocket science either, but it's just how does a town want to develop going forward? The cluster development, it's never used, but the cluster development, as I explained last night, those were brought in starting in the nineties in communities and it was an idea, if you're going to have subdivisions, you give an incentive to create a lot of open space in the subdivision. You've allowed the lot sizes to become smaller. Our trigger for that kind of development is ten acres. We never see a ten acre subdivision anymore. We were thinking of lowering it to five, but it's really tied to whether we make a change in frontage, which might encourage more subdivision development versus what we've had in the last fifty years. So.
So tonight we're going to talk about the implementation of the new development impact mitigation bylaw, PB five.
Great. Okay, and town council, finish that up.
Oh, on, on the three that have been dropped?
Yeah.
Sure, go ahead, I'm sorry, Mr. Grady.
First off, I'm fully in support of any funding you might need. I want to just lay that across the line to get any study. If you get it done, get it done. And just from my knowledge, if you got the F A R through or the town council, and now thank you so much for all your hard work on this and those. But current residents, current owners would be grand father under existing laws right now.
To a certain extent, yes, but not completely. I mean, everybody needs to understand that we already, under our current zoning, have some number over sixty percent of houses are non-conforming in one way or the other. The house size, setback height, footprint, lot size, usually it's lot size. You know, and you just don't get to do what you want and you just don't get to slap on an addition because you want one under our current zoning. And you're going to have to go through a process because you're a non-conforming house or lot or both. You're going to have to go through a process with the zoning board. Would this add non-conformities? I'm sure it would in certain circumstances. But what it's trying to do, what the intent of it was to memorialize a limit based on our current development patterns up at least through twenty twenty-one. So accounting for the size spurt we have seen in houses that the working group's data had shown between two thousand and two thousand twenty. Not only did we have a population spurt, we also had a average house size spurt. That's what it was doing and it was going to make house size looked at in a three-dimensional way as opposed to two-dimensional that we have today and make it proportional to lot size. You have a big lot, you'll get a big house. Smaller lot, it's going to be a more modest house. Not going to take away anybody's existing house, but it isn't an open door to say that an existing house can just add in addition in any way they want. They are going to be, they may become non-conforming and have to go through the zoning board process, which is not an absolute no, but it's a process. But over sixty percent of the lots in town today are non-conforming and have to go through that process if they wish to make an expansion, so. I don't, I, you know, personally didn't think it was going to be overly burdensome to switch to.
Matter of fact, so that's why I'm saying, I'm any funding given, I would ask that when the report comes out, it's in layman's terms so people can understand.
Yep.
Exactly what the proposed impact Cohasset is and what the term proposed for what our people that want to develop Cohasset, uh, projections as to what the future of Cohasset is going to be. And so I'd ask and hope for you, you laid it out.
Well, and it was said that I didn't have quote unquote examples. Yes, I had examples and I could take any one of your houses, just give me what the lot size is and, you know, I could tell you based on the proposed number. And I, and I also said that the proposed F A R numbers that I had written down, I was amenable to tweaking them and moving them around, but I didn't get a solid answer on that from anyone. And again, I, I don't think, I don't think the members of the board, at least it's not clear to me, in their defense, it maybe is just not clear to me is that whatever study they want, they don't know what study they want, they just think it needs to be studied. As opposed to me saying it's not as complicated as you think it is. It's not as complicated to me, it might be.
That's part of the study.
You know, no, I'm not gonna, I'm not going to get into an argument about it. I have worked too long and too hard about this to not, I'm not going to worry about it anymore. And if it comes forward in the spring, so be it, if it doesn't, it doesn't.
Mr. Farag.
Sorry, this, if the board contemplates a study, I would suggest that include visuals and pictures of before and afters. When the town did, you know, the town did the village bylaw. That was one of the big things because it showed what would be the potential buildings when the village bylaw was implemented. And around that, it was able to take out the fear of the unknown and was able to build consensus regarding it so that people could nod their heads and say, okay, this is what we want our village. I think the same thing is this, is that when you, when you take a few examples, you can visualize them. Then people, then the policy or the zoning change considers it on its own merits. When we're arguing about the numbers of what an F A R is should be point one seven or point two oh or whatever, it, it, it's in the abstract and it's, it's hard for anybody to wrap their arms around, well, what does this mean for me? What does this mean to my house? I think some basic, if you're going to have a study, I think there needs to be visuals with it and then everybody can, and, and even the clean one, because I doubt, it, it, it's just hard to grasp. When you get the fear of the unknown, that vacuum is filled with a no on town meeting floor. That's what, that's what gets filled with.
And so, and, and, and my attitude at this point is so be it, if that's the, the, this is not something that lends to a visual, okay? It is a mathematical equation and it's simple to understand if people would listen to understand it and be careful of crit, crit, critiquing things. But I also think that a lot of people on boards, the only ones reviewing this so far, are thinking individually rather than collectively about what is in the best interest of the town. When, you know, one of my members last night's, when I made the statement, there's a trend toward pushing the limits on development. We can see it. We permitted a ten thousand square foot house, we permitted a nine thousand square foot house. We see people coming to large home reviews who are not happy with large homes being built in their neighborhood that are out of scale to that neighborhood. That doesn't mean those houses wouldn't have gotten built, the ten thousand would be smaller than nine thousand might have because of their lot size. They also had large lot sizes. It, it's, it's really, you know, I, I, the individual voter may think, well, am I going to be able to do an addition without having to go through a process? Fine, it's a simple mathematical equation to apply to their lot. Visualizing it is hard, I'd have to do it for however many lots we have in town. Well, I don't, I, people will be able to know by numbers what they can do and they can't do. I wouldn't waste money on making fancy pictures for something that is not, lends itself to fancy pictures, making the decision yea or nay.
I think a couple of examples would be germane to it, but that's okay.
Yeah, but I can give you examples.
Yep. We're actually here to talk about PB five, Mr. Creighton.
Just very briefly, I'm a big supporter of F A R. It is mathematical, it's just very elegant way to solve an issue and what it really does for the life person is it puts things in perspective. However, I do think that some pictures would help people who are never going to understand that, to see that it's not this frightening thing. So I think it's a good idea to have some pictures, but I'm firmly in support and I know exactly what, what, what you mean. I've been dealing with F A R for twenty-plus years in Boston and Cohasset, so. So I hear what you're saying.
No, I know. My, my classic.
This is just to me.
No, my classic example is a new lot and a new house on Sawyer Street near Deer Hill School. And you can run the numbers of what they're proposing to build and how big their lot size is and what the F A R is proposed to be applied to that. And yeah, I could do a visual of what the house would look like if it went to our twenty percent lot coverage. And I want to assure everybody that other than on the smallest of lots in residence A, no one is yet approaching our twenty percent lot coverage. But the trends are in that direction. We're getting pushed on the limits of height, on setbacks, on everything else, and it's only a matter of time.
Oh, no, I'm arguing in favor.
Yeah, no, I know. And we can, I can draw a picture of what a house that is thirty thousand square foot would look like on a lot that is actually only building a fifty five hundred square. So we could do that, but that's the visual that we.
I, I was just going to say to, to wrap this up, so we can move on to P V, P D five is that I would hesitate to include in any public presentation, any photographs of any private residents in town as examples without permission. So perhaps it's renderings, you know, um, when we get to the point about talking about the study. Um, but I just want to go back there. I don't, we shouldn't be out photographing people's homes.
Oh, F A, F A R.
Just so you know, the public record you and my permission.
Photograph your house.
I, I, I try, I try in giving my public examples of not identifying properties by address. Um, as far as this town meeting goes, the discussion of the land alteration by law may refer to a property, but I haven't referred to its address or its owner. Everybody knows where it is. It's the poster child for this.
For the record, opposing people's private residences, I tell you, pictures, that we do visualization. You just take the lot, whatever the size of the.
Yeah, I can.
And it's, and it's a, it's a.
But unfortunately.
Yeah, no, understood, David. It's just, it's different than the village because the village is, is primarily commercial, you know, um, so.
Chairman, I think we beat this horse.
Alright, so let's, alright. Alright, so um, over the course of the last couple of years, it was discussed that we should, you know, what can the boards do about making sure if we have a large project that the town, any impact, adverse impact that the town's infrastructure is being dealt with? Um, we thought about this in preparation for if we get a large scale development out of the M B T A district. And it came up with a recent subdivision of planning board, relatively small subdivision, but built off the end of a old narrow street. And when there's concessions on building sidewalks and dealing with infrastructure, it's mostly done by negotiation. A developer wanting to smooth the waters and get their permit and not get into long-term fights and litigation. We thought it'd be better if the planning board and the zoning board for their respective permits would have a tool, an actual statutory tool where they can request mitigation in the appropriate circumstance. So um, there aren't many towns that have this. Uh, we look, we looked at Dedham. Uh, town council also found a provision that's incorporated to this that came from Midway about forests. But the Hanover and Dedham bylaws deal with mostly their large scale commercial development that they both have. Um, this is, you know, relatively a unique by law for a small town like ours. But given the sentiments that we've heard, we thought it was good that small town like ours have some protections. And so we had to adapt what these other towns are doing to assets particular needs. So the first thing is deciding what it's going to apply to. So as currently written, that town council came up with, it's any project that needs a special permit or site plan review. So that will certainly capture the village, which needs both, the harbor, which usually needs both, and three A, which at least usually needs, the commercial projects need a site plan. So all the commercial projects would be captured by this. Then we said subdivisions, and since we don't get particularly large subdivisions, we said subdivisions of three or more. And the most recent one the planning board dealt with was a four lot subdivision, although across the street, a different owner, that whole area at the end of Black Horse Lane is going to end up having eight to ten houses, not just four. Um, it would have been handy to have that tool for that subdivision. Uh, so we said subdivisions over three. And then there was a sentiment amongst the planning board of trying to capture some single family development. Because there's been examples up in North Cohasset where there's been a lot of blasting, How Road, Tad Lane. But they're not subdivisions. They're individual lots being built, perhaps simultaneously, perhaps by the same developer, but they're not subdivisions. So town council came up with the trigger that anything that would have to go through large home review, which is a form of site plan review, it's a residential site plan review, would also trigger the by law. Now that does not mean if the by law is triggered, it doesn't mean that there will be mitigation ordered in each case. The powers that are given in that to the planning board and the zoning board are completely discretionary. It'll be case by case. But if there's a place where we can say to a project, you need to build so much, so many feet of sidewalk or you need to repave the road that you're going to tear up or contribute to the sidewalk fund, or last night gave the example of a tree fund. There's a provision that came from Midway that we are questioning, there was a question brought up last night whether that provision is going to stay. But because it overlaps with Concom jurisdiction, but um, we'd be able to ask for certain things, either in the form of a financial contribution to certain town fund or to an actual infrastructure improvement or dealing with an adverse impact. We can only deal with, uh, I think the by law, again, I don't have in front of me. It deals with infrastructure, it deals with impacts on historical resources, environmental resources. Um, we can't do anything beyond that. We can't do any adverse, we can't do any mitigation related to school populations, things of that sort by state law. So we're, those are the areas we can address. And we just think we need to be prepared for whatever future development, the harbor, village is coming. And particularly for the M B T A district, if we do get a large scale development, so. I think it's been very, you know, to have coacidized it, I think town council did a really, really great job. I, I, again, unique for a small town, but I think something that we have to just think about protecting ourselves and adopting something of this nature will give the planning board and the zoning board just another tool in their toolkit that they don't have at the moment.
Mr. Flex.
Uh, first I want to acknowledge Mr. Gray's comment earlier about not beating a dead horse. I think this one is simply straightforward. It's a good idea. I will not beat it.
Well, that's good. I think I agree. Let's not be, you know, I'll make the motion.
Like to hear from everybody who'd like to make a comment, please.
Alright, people who like to beat a dead horse speak.
Sorry, that was uncalled for.
I would just say on this one, thank you for doing this. Thank you for town council for going over and coacidizing it from the ones that were looked on previously over a year ago. And it's a long time coming. And this will certainly help if the, the planning or the tools to help protect the town character. It's historic resources, that's natural resource as well. So I'm all in favor. Thank you.
Thank you.
Grady?
I'm ready to approve it.
Okay, so, um, so is this the same person who made the motion to refer back to the planning board? Um, to include this in special town meeting?
Correct.
Okay, may I have a motion? May I finish the motion, please? May I have a motion for uh, P V five implementation of a new development impact mitigation by law to refer back to the planning board?
So move.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Uh, just announced that our planning board's mandatory public hearing to give recommendations start October ninth. It'll be all the articles except mitigation and frontage. We will be withdrawing the F A R one on the sixteenth. We will take any uh spill over from the ninth meeting, but the sixteenth is the night we have scheduled for the mitigation. Deal with frontage with withdrawal. So both of those will be public hearings. There's Zoom hearings. Uh, welcome the public to come and make comments.
Okay. Thanks very much. Okay, um.
Thanks, Tom.
Alright, next up is um.
Alright, you wore that. I did.
A public safety update with um, police chief Bill Quigley and Michelle Leary. And Kevin will get them promoted shortly.
Anyone want to work a dead horse?
Hello, chief.
Hey, good evening, boy.
Evening. I think we're waiting for Michelle.
Yeah, I think I see her popping right in now.
Okay. It's Michelle on. Oh, okay. Hi, Michelle.
Hi. How are you, everyone?
Oh, there you are. Okay. So would you like to give us an update on the public safety building?
Sure. Um, so I'm going to start off talking a little bit about our project team and who we've contracted with. So as you may or may not know, we've contracted with P three for our O P M services. Um, Dan Pallotta is the lead um, project manager for P three, and he'll be working with our team. Um, we recently contracted with H K T as our designers. Um, they've hit the ground running um, pretty swiftly. So we've now had two meetings with them. We, we, we meet weekly. Um, there's five components to the design team's immediate um, needs. So the first thing they do is they assess the current facilities. Um, while typically they're only assessing one facility, here they're assessing two. So anything they do for King Street, they then move over to sixty two Elm Street to make sure that they're um, giving the due attention to both sites. Um, the second thing they do is they go through the programming and assessment needs. And they've worked with both chief Doc Ray and chief Quigley, um, as well as Glenn Pratt to figure out the needs of all the departments in the emergency management team. Um, they've already given a draft assessment of the program needs to the chiefs to look through. Um, and we are actively looking through that to see where in fact, um, if there's something missing, we can add, or um, if there's something there that's not necessary, we can take away. Um, the third component would be the site evaluation. They've had contractors in and out so far this week. They've had um, the M E P contractors in today. Um, tomorrow they have code consultants. Um, Thursday they have structural engineers, um, and they're moving forward with landscape architects as well. So that's all encompassing in the site evaluation. The next component is the financial analysis. Um, so after purchasing the building, um, we, we received ten million dollars. After purchasing the building, um, we have seven point four million dollars. Um, and, and that money is for construction as well as the O P M and the design team. Um, after the financial analysis is done, based on the programming needs and assessment, they will move to preliminary concepts. The preliminary concepts, we're hoping to be able to give um, the community a view at special town meeting on December ninth. Um, but with all this being said, we are going to start generating a weekly newsletter. So the community is aware of everything that's happening um, with the design team and where we stand. Um, people will be able to sign up via our website, and that is something that we will launch in the coming weeks. Um, this group is extremely talented. Um, we're excited to be working with them and we see great progress being made already. And I'll hand it over to the chief.
Hey, um, so just to, to, to build on what Michelle um, said, this, I'm getting a huge education in public, public buildings, uh, building projects. It, it's been um, it's been a whirlwind for the last few weeks, actually the last few months. But um, this last couple of weeks were really uh, taking off. Um, the project manager is, he's, I, I think you, uh, the board and the community will, will, um, will like him and enjoy him and, and uh, he, he just has a wealth of knowledge. And uh, he pulls no punches. He has both eyes on the budget and uh, he um, uh, he, he doesn't mince words. Um, uh, so, so it's been good. And, and again, it's been eye opening. Um, he's pointing out a lot of things that, you know, we didn't consider, including, you know, just the volatility in the market. And uh, the quicker we get this done, the, the better off we'll be. Um, and you know, new king today was the um, the strike of the port workers, the longshoremen. Um, that could impact us down the road. So uh, we're, we're considering everything, we're working hard and um, uh, you know, and every day.
Great, thank you. Any um, questions, Mr. Cora, Mr. Grayton?
No. Oh, well done.
Mr. Grady?
Just one thing, chief, I just want to thank you, your force, Michelle, and everybody working on that, you know, and also the hell of a job you guys have done in a building that has not been touched since nineteen sixty two, give or take few upgrades here and there. But since nineteen sixty two, you guys have been working out of that building, you, fire department, your force. I just wanted to say thank you so much.
I appreciate it.
I'm, I'm looking forward to ribbon cutting, building well deserved and well earned.
Thank you. And that's, that's one of the things, it's, it's sort of interesting. We, you know, I've, I've worked there, you know, my entire career, you know, thirty five years. And you sort of become numb to your surroundings and, you know, and you're bringing these outsiders to the Elm Street facility. And they just sort of shake their head, you know, and Michelle was there. And uh, yeah, this, this is probably one of the worst police stations that we've seen um, in, in, in recent times. And uh, they were sort of taken back by um, the condition, you know, where we're keeping prisoners and things like that. So this was, you know, well needed and um, it, it's going to be a good day when we get back into compliance with the state and, and uh, get things done the right way.
Mr. Flex?
Uh, just briefly, first want to thank you, Michelle, for remembering the community engagement. One for the reason that chief just mentioned, so people can see where we're coming from and understand how important this is. Also so that everyone can see all the hard work that's going into it. And then lastly, it's a lot of money. It's important for people to see where it's going. So that community engagement is going to go a long way. So thank you for that.
Okay. Yep, and um, regarding supply chain, that's my, my business, my job. So I'm very attuned to where every ship is right now off the east coast and Gulf coast. And you know, all the rerouting that's going to go on, but it could be devastating um, to um, the U S economy for both imports and exports. So we'll keep an eye on that. So thank you, chief. Thank you, Michelle. Appreciate it. Uh, Michelle, I think you're going to stay on for the um, recreation update?
Yes.
Thank you, boy.
Thank you.
Thanks, chief. Okay, so as far as the recreation update, um, I don't know if anyone's driven through town um, to see the Beechwood project. So that's moving along nicely. Um, last week we were able to get the asphalt down for the new parking spaces as well as the um, basketball court. Um, the basketball court right now is along with, along with the parking spaces is going through the fourteen day cure process before we can put the servicing down. Um, the port in place material for the playground was delivered yesterday. Um, and tomorrow they're going to start working on the port in place. They anticipate needing three to four days to complete that. Um, and then once that's complete, we just asked that everyone stay off of it for um, three or four days to make sure it sets properly. Um, and we will have an official ribbon cutting for the opening of the playground. We're, we're shooting the end of October. Um, and it'll be an exciting time for both the playground and the basketball courts in that entire area. So we're very excited about that project. Um, the next project that we're also excited about is the tennis courts. Um, you may see people working there on forming the retaining wall. Um, so they've been there setting the forms all week. Um, we're hoping to pour some concrete um, either tomorrow or Thursday. And this is not the concrete pour that is going to start at four thirty A M. Um, this is just a, a traditional concrete pour, probably four or five trucks um, per day to get these forms set. Um, we did have a surveyor come down and actually mark out the town land around Milliken. Um, we were surprised by some of the results, but um, nevertheless, it's been marked out with some rebar. So it's surveyed um, for us to take a look at in the future. Um, we do meet weekly on this project. As a matter of fact, we have another construction meeting tomorrow. Um, and we did let them know about the school times and not being able to come up Pond Street when the major pour happens. Um, we also let them know that we would need at least one week's notice, if not more, so we could notify the, the butters as well as the school.
Yeah. Any comments or questions, Mr. Flex? Mr. Grady?
Nope.
Mr. Grayton?
Well done, Michelle.
Mr. Cora?
It's well done and I think the community, it's long overdue and they're looking forward to the new tennis courts, so.
Yeah.
And I would say just, Michelle, thank you so very much. You've done a yeoman's job in that park. I drove by it the other day and um, I know the people over there are really happy. It's a real nice asset to the town. Thank you very much.
Yeah. Yeah. Thank you, Michelle. I get the daily update from my husband who drives by every day. Because they did this to that today. It looks like they're going to do that tomorrow. He's, he's very excited. He's very impressed with the scope of the project and how quickly it's been happening. So, thank you for all your hard work, Michelle. It's much appreciated.
Sure. Thank you.
Okay. Moving on. FY '24 financial recap, first quarter update.
Yeah. So, a quick, quick recap before I move to where we are in the numbers. So, the, you know, the fiscal team that I have the good, good, good luck to be working with closely. Had a really productive year. We actually, we had a triple A credit. We had our first monitoring review in a couple of years back in the spring. And I was actually the only member of the team that ever numbered rings. So, and people got a little bit nervous going into today. Everyone did a great job. They did great research. We asked some great questions. I remind everybody that they had tremendous experience. They might have done a ransom. Everyone had a decade of war in financial, in the financial, sometimes in public, sometimes private, sometimes in both. So, they actually brought about a century of experience in the ransom. So, and I made sure the SFP knew it. And they reaffirmed us to SAA and recognized the strength of the management. So, it's, it's important to know that we have a really strong team, and they've done really good work. As I said, we are still searching for a perfect, it's like, I feel like it's like finance director, island or something, right? Trying to find, trying to find the perfect person. So, and that search continues. We've had, I think, somebody, somebody positive in the last week. So, I'm not going to stay. So, hopefully, good news shortly. That said, we have a firm, folks who are finance directors, actually, they're doing our closeout for last year, and like getting our books done for the audit, for the audit. And we have a retired account. We're trying to contract more hours ahead of us to help currently with our assistant account who's been great. So, she's really doing great. She's, and one of the things I, I want to say too, is everyone's been going through a lot of professional problems. There's regular trainings. They go to the trainings. Our assistant account is on the path to becoming a certified account, which is very exciting. Treasure collector was a certified treasurer. She's now a certified collector as well. She just passed the test spring. And so, we have an item that everyone's building and growing. So, it's exciting. I just want to run that. So, as I said, so all of you got electronic versions of them off the, and these are boring. Putting these up on the screen was just boring, I think. I promise we'll have better graphics soon. I am working on that. So, if you're looking up, sorry, can't get the ones I'm going to give you in a minute. The, right now, the preliminary closeout is, is good. We actually were a little bit ahead of revenue, and we're below in expense. That's the perfect, perfect marriage, right? So, a little, little up on revenue, a little down on expense. We don't have a certified free cash. Don't forget, we'll get there. And, and, and we'll see where we go. So, at this point, we're in the margin. We should be in a good place. We're going to have free cash. And I guess among the highlights, so are some of our local revenues are particularly positive. Where the exit meals, meals and rooms access tax, we did over 350,000, which means our local restaurant industry is really thriving. And I can't, I think you can see that. I walk the dog regularly, and I was down there last Friday, and there were people waiting, and they were waiting in the smaller restaurants. It's really great to see that kind of energy. And I saw a couple. I said, oh, are you looking for a place? And I waited for, for one restaurant. I said, well, there's a couple of others here. Oh, yeah, but so it was nice to see you waited for tables. So, and the other thing is that there's multiple places to go. So, if you want Mexican one night, or seafood, or a regular meal, or even a pub, there's lots of opportunities. There's still other restaurants in development down the street. And up on 3A, you know, the boards are in prime. The new one's going to go over financial ways to me. That'll be open hopefully, that early in the year. So, later, perhaps. So, the, that was a big, that was a big increase. So, we saw a good number on that. That was actually up 30% for the past year. And we definitely did well on investment earnings. Obviously, interest rates are higher, and our staff has done a really good job of making sure they're invested well. So, that was up 50%. So, and 50% of that, a couple hundred thousand dollars. That was, that was actually really money, not that sometimes you can see a tweak, and it's only like $10,000. So, these are, these are real numbers. And our motor vehicle access tax still runs strongly. That was up 8% year-on-year, which means people are still buying cars. So, please, buy a new car. If you feel the mood, go right after and get yourself a new one. And again, expense-wise, I think we're in good shape. We haven't gotten all the adjustments in, but pretty much everyone ran pretty well. And some are a little bit low. I mean, we always, we work real hard to get more insurance numbers, both in health and property casualty under control. So, any questions on the general fund at this point? Because that's, it'll be getting updates as we go. So, this is sewer. So, the sewer fund, they had an increase of about almost 8% in revenue from over their project. And their, their expenditures just aren't targets. They spent all their money, or they brought in more. So, they showed a positive. It's called retain earnings. And in that case, their big, one of their big losses is connection fees. So, they, they have more customers coming on. I mentioned in the memo I gave you that, you know, about 30 residential units are coming onboard, and then the Cook Estates has been added. And you have some commercial income coming over in stop and shops. So, more customers, more flow, something with the water. They're going to be getting more residential. That's all good news. The, again, the, they got more, they got a lot more earnings on, on their money in the bank. And the balance, so everyone knows the little harbor benefits are still being paid off. Those are being paid off a lot of money is banked, and when out the process started dropping, as we head to the end of that period. So, when you see that there's a revenue coming in, that's because it was planned. So, the money's been banked. When I first got here, Mary Gallagher, so setting the way, it was in schedule. When starting to pull out money out now, participation as, as the payments get closer to the end. Some people prepaid them. So, we banked it stuff. Because you can't be prepaid bonds. So, that's, that's sewer. Sewer, sewer has some good numbers. And water also had a, water was down a little bit in expense, just up a little bit in revenue. So, there, again, should end the year in a positive, positive balance. They're, they had a big spike in what they call system development. Those are the water hookups. So, it's going to be a good, a good thing for them. And their usage charge is just up 1% from year to year. We had kind of a wet summer, and there was a big spike after COVID, more people living in town. So, are staying in town, you know, all day. I think that's reflective. The capital recovery fee or the base fee, as they call it now, is, is also the people, it's a bigger revenue now than the recent service. And they are selling water to only, only ponds. That's a big interest, interest flow group on water. There's also due. So, that is water at sewer. Any questions on either of those?
Questions, anyone?
Would you run the juice? Do you need a, do you need a microphone?
I just went up, too.
I was made for Christopher.
Thank you.
This is the first quarter. I'll send us the electronic. I was doing a lot of damage. So, we have a first look at the first quarter of this year. So, again, we're kind of right on target. Again, the revenues and expenses don't flow exactly quarterly, by quarterly, again, obviously, you know, the motor vehicle access tax, that almost comes in in the spring. And our debt is not a steady, steady level debt. In fact, it's warrants who, for some reason, going up very early in the year. That said, we're, we're doing okay. So, we do prepay things. So, if you look at a employee benefit, it's like, oh, my God, we're 50% early quarter in. We prepay our entire pension bill at the beginning of the year. We save a little money for that. And we prepay our other insurance. So, that's one of the reasons that looks like it's 37% of our property liability. It's because we prepay the bill same month. Again, in terms of revenue so far, you know, we're, we're kind of there. The, you know, the, we don't have our, if you notice, it's not going to be, there's no, the second page, there's no real, we're not they weren't going to read system. It's quarterly, but it's not balanced to the quarter. So, we haven't gotten our first check for this fiscal year yet. And we will be getting that soon. So, I'm curious, because I don't think they'll sell. So, I'll be sure. And I can, otherwise, you know, we're, we're kind of, we're doing okay. You know, people pay their taxes on time. That's never been a problem here. We usually collect 99.5 or 99%, and it all comes eventually. So, and otherwise, our, our other revenues are doing okay. So far, our expenses are okay as well. At least that's what I'm sure. I think that's, I think so.
Okay. Yeah, go ahead.
Chief. Yes. Regarding water and sewer, are those, are both of those, both of those being audited at this point, are they a part of the audit, and what's the extent of the part of the audit?
Yeah, they're fully part of the audit. So, they're all, they're all audited. I think it's schools, the town, everything is audited. And there's been a historic the majority of the board has been content, providing answers. I will tell you, there would be a little bit understaffed on this. So, I'm going to be providing the next physical and personal update. So, now that I have it, I have, I didn't bring in water at sewer, I didn't do that. In putting in they're, they're really not that complicated budget stack. And they're both run by third parties. So, the day-to-day management of bills and stuff is being handled by our contractor, which is where I'm currently. The, we did have an extensive review of the debt schedules in the spring. That all worked out well. So, that's a good shit. In fact, we were able to pay off some, some debt without, without having to work over, maintain earnings. And so, that, that was all brought up to speed back in the spring. So, before town meeting, that's all, that's all good shit. I know that there's two very large studies going on. One is for, well, they both involve the long-term provision of water. There's a regional study on bringing the MWR to the investors, what are we starting to do to the South Shore? Part of it, I think it's an eight-town consortium that's studying that. And there has to be, there's a lot of things going on. So, but this, this is a big conversation, because the plant is going to need some significant improvements. So, there's also a study going on as to what that might cost. So, I expect sometime later in the year, we should be getting the MWR, MWRA members this fall. I think the plant in a similar vein. So, there'll be a definitely time for a public conversation this fiscal year with no money needed to be spent in the short term. But that planning conversations are on. And we already talked about sewers, so we're already upgrading the train, that membrane sign. It's a big item and project to hopefully control that. So, it's a lot of active work going on both of those.
In light, in light of the public comments they received from one of the water commissioners, what about regarding reconciliations on the accounts? Yeah, I think those are up to date. The boards have them.
So, they, they are. One of the so, so they're, again, admitting that the last couple of months have been a little bit, we've been understaffed. The users still happen. So, I will be the person who's going to visit the water for the next period of months until I have someone else to come in. And we have, you know, there is, there is a full review and this floor. So, everything is balanced. The, the, the nice thing about both of those is that, again, sewer's a little similar to the plant, right? That people don't, it's, it's a similar operation in terms of supplies. Water is a little more complicated. It's bigger, and it's, you know, it's customers, and this water may break occasionally, and you have to pay it and check and read meters.
Losses and leakages?
Yeah, exactly. So, that, that said, because they had, they had, they had their water and current staff are charged with managing their, you know, they have their budget. It's approved. And, and, and they are, they have a budget to buy supplies. They get reports on a regular basis from them. I mean, we don't, the town doesn't actually, we process the bills. We don't, what it is actually operating the plant, and they, they're required by their contract to give them the due on what they're spending on chlorine or any kind of capital upgrades, or, you know, what the plant staff are doing, do that. It's a monthly report that's quite detailed. I don't know if you'll get it. I can most certainly make sure you do if you're not. But it's a monthly report that water and current gives, that everything the work machine gets. It goes into like the levels of the reservoirs, except I was putting that. So, so there are extensive, they'll just come from us, but also for wood, because they are the plant owner.
Any other? Yes, Mr. Creighton?
The water commissioner has some very specific comments. Things where she maintained that she hadn't had information. Can you specifically answer those? And I know you may not be able to do it now, but could you, within four or five days, send specific answers to the board members?
So, I will type the majority of the board members, two of three, and then content at any age. Member Member Jenkins. Again, I don't want to question issue, but certainly it's time to our perspective. Even this evening was bringing up things from two and three years ago that were long-sighted. And, and while she may not have what she perceives she wants, the commission has been satisfied with the work they're doing. Now, I think, I admit it right now, we're not doing to the level I'd like. I'd rather have a accountant there every month. And that's not, that has not happened in the last few months. Also, I'm going to be going down. That said, we had some extensive meetings in the spring. Again, all members could be part of, because it's a three-member board. So, the chair took that role. That was, Mr. Pratt was Pratt. And we had some extensive conversations about the debt and the debt, and that all got cleaned up. Now, again, I, we did do, and we reached agreement, and things were good. And in terms of some of the questions about indirect costs, those are all resolved as well. I mean, there, there, there was a mistake in charge made by our finance director. Corrected, and we gave them a credit for it. So, it's all been resolved though. Did it happen? It did. We corrected it, and it wasn't, also, I, I don't, I don't consider it to be would have been better if we didn't do it in the first place. We fixed it. So, it was nothing.
What I asked for was, are you willing to, she made some very specific charges. Are you willing to specifically answer them point by point?
No, I, 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 I so you're not going to? No, 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 I'm not going to. I'm not, I, the fact that someone, I lost my mic. I have a rolling microphone. I, I respectfully, I rejected the premise of the question. The mere fact that someone raised an issue does not mean it's a real issue. I am most certainly willing any time to meet with Commissioner Jenkins, any of the commissioners, and answer any questions they have. My office is open, and I've done it extensively. I'm happy to do it now. So, if the commissioner has questions she'd like to answer of me, I'm happy to deal with her directly and answer any question. And if you have any specific questions, select, right, how about that research?
What I simply asked, and we didn't have to go on this one so long, was, are you prepared to specifically answer in writing the questions that a water commissioner raised at this public meeting? That's all I'm asking for.
The commissioner may know, if the commissioner makes direct questions of me, I'm happy to answer them, but I'm not going to answer a public comment that had no, that I'm happy to answer any question she brings to me directly, always, ever. Totally accessible. I'm happy to do it. And if, if she wants to bring questions to me directly, I'm happy to do it. Whether, and if she wants to put us in context, happy to give her whatever answer I can. And if, if you're answering me, if I'm going to go back and forth on a public comment, no, something great on me. You know, I, I often, I, my doors might open, and if there's questions that she wants to ask, or any commissioner, or any citizen, by the way, I'm happy to answer.
With all due respect, she made some specific allegations at a public meeting and public comment. And I think that the town is entitled to have specific answers to the specific allegations that she just made. It's a very simple request.
So, it's been asked, and it's been answered. And so, if you would like to take it up privately with Mr. Senior, I mean, public comment is public comment. It's not a topic for discussion or deliberation by the select board. And I, Mr. Senior has indicated that he is more than happy to talk to any one of the commissioners or all three of the commissioners, and he, and he has been, and many of the issues have been resolved.
I disagree.
Okay.
And he also said he's willing to talk to any select board member as well.
Right.
I don't know. So, if there's any questions on the finance, on the management, anyone else? Just want to congratulate you on the triple A rating, and we need a relatively junior team through their first ratings call. That's a challenge. Applauding for the successful. I appreciate it. And again, I have to give all the credit to the folks who've come every day prepared. They work really hard, and it's a real honor to work alongside them. So, it's my pleasure. So, I'm going to switch if we're ready.
Yes, we're ready to move on.
Good.
I got it. So what you have is, uh, the table of contents for the draft one. Um, you'll see the sixteen articles. Uh, this takes into account that all seven potentially that we've already referred will go forward. So the vast majority of this warrant is, um, the vast majority of this warrant is zoning. So I'll take a little walk through it. Uh, I don't know if we're gonna make any amendments, but these are the things we put on just in case. I don't know if I'm doing amendments budget. Um, I'm not sure if unpaid bills were common. We are taking a look to see if anything we need to get paid, uh, that didn't, uh, get encumbered already. We typically make a, a contribution to stabilization from the O P M stabilization fund. So that would be on the, uh, on the stabilization funds for sure. Uh, we have a couple of projects, a long-term costs. There's the open space recreation study. We need to put aside money for some of that. Uh, Chairman Callahan was talking about maybe some additional money for an F A R study. We most certainly set aside some money for that. Uh, as, as needed, uh, just capital improvement projects. I know that, uh, might need to set aside some money, uh, actually climbing, set aside some money. For the, uh, Oscar school roof design, providing, you know, just as a placeholder, at least hopefully get into that program. We'll know at the end of the month. And I know the school is also exploring a good proceed now in spring.
Well, while we're waiting, can I ask you just, we, maybe, and.
Yes, and, and, and also, I got cut off. Yeah, so, uh, the, um, the little working group was going on at my meeting last week. Uh, might, uh, might put a few dollars at request to do some, uh, to, to do some ongoing, you know, uh, work around the, the, the joint project of the community. Community groups, uh, and, and vision. So, uh, we'd like to put that in there too. So you'll see that at the next meeting.
I, I have a question on the Oscar school roof. You said maybe set aside some money for design and engineering. Would that not come out of the school stabilization fund?
You mentioned a town meeting.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. No, I understand that. I.
Yeah, when I say capital, that's, that's, that's capital stabilization, capital school stabilization.
Okay.
Uh, as I'm writing, the investment is very low. So they have a very structured process. So it, it may not be a very large level.
Okay, thank you.
And, and you've already, you've just heard the presentation on the social hotel amendments. Uh, the creation of a revolving fund of public health programs. That's for the rental inspection program. So that would, that would allow the money who comes in for that to go right back into this revolving. Budget. Um, the seven articles, uh, you've already discussed. And one of the petitions was filed, which I think was circulated, uh, it's to amend the town manager act. Um, uh, right now there are, uh, three positions, uh, that, that under the town manager, the town manager. On merit festival, next recommendation, the board then votes on as police chief, fire chief, finance director. This would add elder affairs or director of elder affairs to that list. That's the entire unit.
Um, I don't believe that petition has been circulated amongst the board.
And you do that. So, um, so that came in, uh, and, and that's, that's the only one that was filed. So, so that, the, the, uh, so all these are heading. I'm gonna be talking to the chair again, an advisor to figure out what kind of schedule I'd like to put on. Um, and they'll, they're applying to me, uh, two or three times. So, so then you'll be getting, you'll be doing some reviews potential on the fifteenth, then definitely get them. And then, uh, if you do, uh, the, the, that meeting, the following week is six, I think, or it's Wednesday, we moved the meeting to, I believe. So I'm gonna do it for six. That's the last drop dead date for the month. So we can get them. As of the, uh, as of next holiday, maybe right there at the end.
Okay. Anyone have any questions? Nope.
Looks like a feasible town for the articles. Yeah.
Yeah.
I just.
Very, yeah, manageable.
I do. When is this citizen's petition coming?
Uh, the day, I guess, was the day, basically, I don't remember the day, was it June? Was it last, last, was it last Tuesday?
Since he was a deadline.
Yeah, came Tuesday.
Came in.
Yeah. Why did you vote to recommend it?
Well, it, it doesn't, you'll get it at it. So you will, you will be discussing it publicly and you will make a recommendation. Well, you have a choice to recommend a recommendation. Um, uh, uh, simply goes to advisor first and then, and you're gonna, we'll, we'll schedule what the petition is taken from.
Sure.
Sure.
Okay, um, town manager update?
Uh, just two quick things. As, as, as Mr. Hickey mentioned, here are. More information, uh, the social voting, uh, he's gonna be presenting to the school committee. So if anybody wants to watch his presentation, one of the things he will talk about. Additionally, he talked about tonight is their school project. And this is a hard copy flyer that he's been circulating, um, that talks about it. There will be a public vote, but not till January. So it'll come in front of all of you. Again, I just want, anyone who want, might want to watch his presentation, we have a school committee tomorrow night. Uh, and then, um, one more pitch, we are still seeking, uh, licensed C D L drivers to join up on those team. Or those who do not have C D Ls, who are willing to learn and continue reading their term with us. Uh, we, we do have a provision of contract that as long as you agree to stay with us for three years and pay it back, we'll pay for your C D L journey. So if there's people who are interested in a new career, it's a fun place, a lot of cool stuff you can do in public works. Um, we have that opportunity. So contact our HR office floor, the website, or give a call to Megan James or Marcus Spencer.
Great, thank you. Um, next up, we have approval of minutes. Um, so the first set of minutes are for September seventeenth, twenty twenty-four. Any comments or questions on them?
Select were comments before and after.
Uh, well, oh, I'm sorry. Thank you for pointing that out. Select board comments. I'm sorry. Wishful thinking. Okay, Mr. Flex?
Nothing to add tonight. Thank you.
Mr. Ray?
Nothing to add.
Uh, Mr. Creighton?
I just noted on the citizen's petition, they had a, a very few number of days. They only, they needed a hundred signatures, which is more than a lot of the other ones. They got a hundred and thirty-five signatures. Um, and the people who got the signatures, uh, told me that the comments that they got, well, they were getting, um, signatures was number one. People were very excited about it. There's a sense of frustration. Um, they think there should have been more added to the, um, checks and balances. And this is really for checks and balances on town managers' prerogatives. Um, there's a lot of excitement. There's a lot of people who are out there. If it had gone on for, uh, ten days. We would have had five hundred, they would have had five hundred signatures. So I think this should be, um, a wake-up call. Um, that there are some concerns and there's some widespread citizens' concerns. And ultimately it will be resolved in a special town meeting. But, but as leaders of our community, we should be aware that when this, um, tsunami of concerns uh, comes up, that we should be paying attention and we should be listening to our voters. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Farad?
Thank you. I just want to congratulate the Cohasset schools where it's been, uh, put out there for the P R team that they received a ribbon of award nationally, uh, which very few schools get for the great work that they're doing up there and continuing, uh, to look at new ways to improve, uh, the school system. So, uh, congratulations to Cohasset schools and all the students, teachers, and everyone who's involved up there, including the administration. Um, secondarily, for a, a future meeting, I would just ask that we could maybe look at the, uh, the town's leases. Uh, one of the things that I was able to talk with Chris regarding the town leases is that, uh, there's a few of them that need to be updated. Uh, so maybe that could be on a future agenda item to look at so that they can be properly updated. Yeah, that's.
Okay, thank you. Um, and I will just, um, say that, and I think I've said this before, so forgive me. But, you know, in, since we don't have our, our beloved Cohasset Mariner, which would come out on every Friday and share all of the news of the town. We're relying on, um, multimedia approaches electronically. And, um, anything anybody wants to know is on the town website. We do have a, a town of Cohasset government Facebook page, which a lot of information is posted and it's, it's information to be posted. There's also a notify button on the town homepage where you can, uh, select any board of committees that you want to be notified of, of when they're meeting. And you get an email alert that their, you know, a meeting has been posted and the agenda is there. So I encourage everyone to utilize the resources we have to stay informed. And that's all I have. Okay, now to the minutes. Okay, uh, minutes of September seventeenth, twenty twenty-four. Any comments or questions? Nope. Can I have a motion to approve?
So.
Mr. Brady approved second.
Second.
Mr. Flex, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Now we have the minutes of September twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four. This is our, um, zoning, uh, review. Any comments or questions? No, uh, may I have a motion to approve?
Don't move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Um, no topics not reasonably anticipated. Let's make sure everyone signs this, please. Um, so can I have a motion to adjourn at eight forty-one? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, everybody.